Good morning. This is City Council Work Session, Wednesday, December 6th, 2021. I think it's the last one for the year. The first item is introduction of new city employees. Terry?
Morning, Mayor. So, I'm here to introduce this fine new employee. We're gonna start with you all.
Yeah, Rebecca, welcome. So, this is Rebecca Dillon. She is our new animal control officer. And we, it's still, we're a little bit slower than Mason County. So she already came to us with quite a bit of experience, which is always great because it makes the training process so much better. So, we're really happy to have you. And can you say a few words about yourself?
Hi, I'm Rebecca. I worked for four years at Basically Animal Services as an animal control officer. I did something slower and a little bit more away in town, so I started looking at this area. And it actually, it now between Delta Animal Control and Montrose, Animal Control and Montrose actually built the first, so I ended up here. I really enjoy looking outside, looking at animals. I have two dogs, my own, that are the loves of my life. I also do ranching, and as well as hiking, and spending a lot of time there.
Well, welcome. You made a good choice.
Hello. I am happy to introduce Shelley Spires, our new restaurant manager at The Rusty Putter. And Shelley may be a familiar face to you. She was born and raised in Montrose, and I also learned her parents were as well. And she has a lot of history in hospitality and managing restaurants. We're serving full of them, Shelley, on our team. And tell us a little about it.
Hi, I'm Shelley. I see a million faces here. Growing up in Montrose. Yeah, like I said, I was born and raised here, second generation Montrosian. I love it here. I am an avid golfer. And when this job opportunity, or the job came open, I thought, what the heck? I need to get back into the restaurant business. And was up without it. Here I am. So my, like, two of my favorite things, the service industry and golf, combined together. And I've got a great, great team out there. And I'm excited to, to get this, the city really take it over this golf course. It's awesome. And to just have it flourish and get back to where you go out there. And it's eight o'clock at night, and I'm heading to school. People are having a good time and enjoying the view and enjoying the course. So, I've got a great team out there. Started about a month ago. And I'm really enjoying it. And I'm happy to be part of the city team.
Thank you.
I also have taken here for Judge Greeniger today. And I'm happy to introduce Donna Hocken. She is our new deputy clerk of court. And Donna has a varied background that includes some harvesting of vegetables over in Cañonia. I learned that she has a little poodle. I have a big poodle. But she also has a lot of detail-oriented experience. And are really happy to have her aboard as our new deputy clerk of court. Tell us a little about yourself.
Thank you so much for your opportunity to be here, my name is Donna. Prior to working here, I'm one of those where I need to fill in grades, and people also ask a lot about my skill. As my family, who too loved it so much, had so much else, and then decided to clear the door for them. I have an eye roll, and I also love this area. And my daughter is my actor. So, when an opportunity for working with the community came up, I really wanted to see what Montrose has offered. I was so impressed by the presentations that were offered by the representing Montrose and overall. I'm excited to be here. I have a varied background. Prior to the challenges, I'm an organic farmer. I actually did work as a company investor for USAID. So, it was, I got off to a good beginning, working with my little team as well. And so I hold on my experiences to the, to the support of it. And once again, thank you so much for your opportunity.
Thank you. Welcome. Okay, we have a panel belt. And he is on our water distribution wastewater collection crew, and we call his crew. He comes from us, from the snow industry. So, he's going from working with frozen water to liquid water. Tell us a little bit about it.
Yeah. My name is Kilo though. I grew up in Kansas. Worked on this farm from eighth grade to twenty. And then after college, we moved to Breckenridge, where I worked as a snow guy. It's a pretty unique job. I ski a lot, and I'm about to be a guy. So, that was fun. Always wanted to ski a lot. Because after seven years, I'm like, I now have a two-year-old. So, two-year-old, larger scales, basically. It's been the biggest time I've ever been. Appreciate the opportunity, and we all love Montrose so much.
So, it doesn't bother you with the thought of being dead feet deep in a lurden in the middle of the night?
No, it's not. It's kind of a safety.
And Jason Schorer, did I say that right? He's our newest street division worker. And actually, I haven't even officially met him, other than his first day showing up and getting straight to work. So, we've both been busy and haven't caught up. So, I welcome to hear from you about yourself a little bit.
And I'm from Granby, Colorado. I've grown up here in all my life. I'm a bowler and a heavy football player by trade. I love the outdoors a lot. Used to get up there and ski a lot. So, I came from the height and stuff like that. My folks moved down here about five years ago. And ever since then, my life, I've been coming busy. Just fell in love with this area. Thought it'd be a great place to try and come get home, start a family tomorrow. Excited to work with the city of Montrose, and see the future places.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
He's got the beard for a couple of works.
Yeah, I think that's why you're there.
It's part of their qualifications.
Practically.
It's our toning program.
The next item we have up today is discussion items. Municipal code revision for supportive housing.
Morning, council, mayor. Thank you all for your time. Today, you're considering municipal code revision related to supportive housing. It's a code amendment that's gonna increase the amount of solutions available to help individuals and families that are experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. It's, way of thinking of it is maybe another tool in the toolbox available to address this issue. And it's for folks that are having a barrier to employment and are facing issues related to housing stability. And this allows supportive housing as a conditional use in office residential district OR, general commercial district B3, light industrial district I have one, and general commercial district I have two. One thing that we want to make sure is like really clear about this, though, is that it is not to be considered a code amendment for a emergency or a shelter that's on an emergency or nightly basis. So, it doesn't include any facilities that are commonly referred to as homeless shelters. This is gonna be for something that is thirty consecutive days or more. So, it's more of a long-term housing solution rather than an immediate need such as a shelter typically provides. You'll see in the staff memo that we have a recommended definition for supportive housing. I'm not gonna read it to you, but you'll note that it also does provide some definitions around what these barriers could be, such as mental illness, chemical dependency, or other disabling chronic health conditions. And it also does provide an idea as far as what some onsite supportive services might be as well. If you're looking at the attached red line version of the code amendment, you'll see that there's a definition that's included there. And it generally encompasses what I've just mentioned now. That supportive housing is for those at-risk populations, that it is not to be considered an emergency shelter or some type of structure that's used on a nightly basis. It's gonna have onsite social services, so supportive services. And it is generally a tool that's at the disposal of the community to address homelessness. So, with that, I welcome any kind of questions you might have.
It is, it makes it conditional. So, in any case, it would allow it to happen, but it isn't a use by right. It would always have to see, that particular development building would have to get a conditional use.
Yes, the way that it is currently, as it currently stands, is that it is conditional use. And so it would have to go through planning commission.
You say currently stand. Do you mean what's proposed?
Yeah, what's proposed.
If it currently stands, it wouldn't be allowed at all?
Not at all. No, as it, as the memo stands, I guess.
And that is, just like Ross said, through planning commission, a conditional use does not come to city council as part of the normal review process. So, I know you all are familiar with it, but in case the public is listening and isn't aware of what that means, a conditional use process that applicant, they wanted to have supportive housing would apply to the city and give us all of the details about their operation. And then staff would present it to the planning commission. And the planning commission would make sure that the use is consistent with the adjacent neighbors, that it's not contrary to public health, safety, or welfare, that it's not materially adverse to the city's master plan. These are things that are required of all conditional uses. And then in addition to that, the planning commission would likely add additional conditions that the supportive housing development or units would need to comply with in order to make sure that it's not contrary to public health, safety, and welfare. And we're not proposing any blanket conditions for this use right now because we think that it's going to depend on the type of development that's proposed. And this gives planning commission and staff a lot of flexibility in order to review everything that's being proposed and then apply relevant conditions to it. And then figure out ways to monitor those conditions moving forward to ensure that the use is compliant with them and complying with the conditions that were put forth. A conditional use permit process also does include public comment period. So that neighbors and residents and potential, you know, adjacent residents or potential residents of the supportive housing complex, everyone could come and learn about the proposed supportive housing use and also make comments and recommendations to the planning commission. So it is a public process. And from staff's perspective, this helps with transparency and gives us an opportunity to hear from the public and the potential developer or applicant regarding all of the specifics of the use as opposed to having it be a use by right, in which case we, the city would not have the opportunity to hear and review all of these things and put conditions in place.
Question I have, I'm sorry, David.
I'm wrong, but even though it doesn't come to council, if it were to be denied at the planning commission level, they have a right of appeal to the council?
Correct.
And so does that extend also that if conditions were placed on, let's say, the planning commission placed certain conditions on the approval, but if the applicant was not satisfied with the conditions placed, would that also allow them to appeal to the council?
Yes, they can do, I think, a co-posited de novo. And also council can essentially have a de novo hearing as well, in the case of an approval or a denial. If you didn't feel like the conditions were right, or you wanted to add more or review it yourself, there is that process in place.
So there is, in certain circumstances, there is always the opportunity to council.
Correct. It's just not part of the standard process. Whereas in some of our land use processes, the planning commission makes a recommendation to council, and then council has the final approval. Conditional uses, if they go per code without that optional de novo, don't include council approval. Just want to make sure you knew that. Thanks for pointing that out.
The one question I have is that you show on here that the barriers and the services provided that can include but are not limited to on the list. Is there a lower bar that you have to have these many services in order to qualify as supportive housing? So, what is, what is our actual definition of supportive housing? If they can just ignore pretty much every one of those necessary services?
Right. And so it would have to include some sort of type of social service onsite. And so that might be like a resource coordinator that's available onsite that is maybe not providing direct services, but is connecting folks to different services as well. And so, as long as there's some type of social service that's provided onsite, then it meets that threshold of supportive housing.
And is that codified anywhere? Is that written down somewhere that the public could go and say, I want to put in a supportive housing unit in location X. What do I have to do to qualify to be considered supportive housing?
It's in the definition, I think, because it talks about, you know, a risk of homelessness and also the fact that there are these onsite supportive services. And what we're finding is right now, without these services in place, apartment buildings, for example, sometimes people at risk of homelessness or who have these types of barriers are living in market rate apartments. But that is different than a supportive housing complex that is sort of coordinating all of these services onsite and often has different operational needs, potentially different impacts collectively as a, as a housing development.
So shouldn't the definition then to Dave's point say onsite supports, onsite supportive services must be offered and can include? I mean, because under this definition, you could say, I don't.
They could put a dorm mall onsite that says, okay, I can tell you where the refrigerator is. Does that qualify as supportive services? There isn't a bar or a threshold of a minimum service necessary to qualify.
And I think we'll certainly look at that. And I think the way maybe that staff was coming about it was perhaps the opposite way, which is that we were not saying that we desire certain minimum basic services in supportive housing. Instead, we're saying that if there are services, then it's no longer just a use by right residential scenario. And so we could combine those to what you're saying so that we can more easily identify that if there are a low bar of social services, whatever that is, low bar meaning not extensive, perhaps?
What's the minimum amount you have to offer in order to be supportive housing versus an apartment?
And therefore not being an apartment building.
Yeah, applicants aren't asking to be supportive housing because that's more restrictive than just housing. So it's, they're looking to not be labeled as supportive housing. Because then they can go into any, wherever you have apartments, any of the residential zones. But if they have these services, then we're gonna call them supportive housing, and they're gonna be available in these particular zones under a conditional use. So they wouldn't come in and want to be labeled as supportive housing.
Sure. But, but somehow explaining that so the public who at some point is gonna be reading this very carefully should figure out what can and can't be allowed perhaps next to property they own, that maybe isn't.
I guess that's my point. And right now, it allows a dodge around our current coding. But if we want to offer supportive housing availability, define it.
And that's where I think from our standpoint, we can do a better job. But we're saying if you have onsite supportive services, they can be or can include these. But then the planning staff categorizes it as supportive housing, not as just multifamily housing. And so therefore, it's more restricted. It's not a use by right.
Yeah, I think maybe we just need to add in in that first sentence under the definition, supportive housing means housing that includes onsite supportive services, such as yada yada yada. Because right now, it says everything.
Exactly. I think the concern. As I see it, you know, hello, everybody, and greetings from Costa Rica. I think my concern would just be, you know, on the other side, if we had somebody who was stating that they did offer some type of service, like a financial service to help support folks who are struggling financially to help pay their bill, does that count as a supportive service? And all of a sudden, do we have to pigeonhole them into that new zone? Or, I mean, I think we would just want to make sure we're clear because I think it can go both ways. Where we might say, okay, well, that's a financial service. They're onsite for three hours during the week to give some financial advice. Does that mean we have to change things now?
If they're doing life skills training, which is the financial thing, then yes. Because otherwise, we get the workarounds and, you know, we have examples in town where they're on that border of violating the code law. And so they try to say that they're not providing any services at all, so they should be able to go into any zone. But then we find out, well, they have a case manager checking in. They go and provide some training on how to get a job. They provide training on how to balance your checkbook. The people that need that type of training are of a different type than, because they have special needs. And that changes the use type as compared to just market rate apartments. So that's why it's that timeline. I think we're clarifying the definition before, because right now, it just seems that we're putting out this fairly nebulous definition of what supportive services are required in order to be that, or what level that we would look at and say, okay, well, if you provide this level of service, now you're over here in our supportive housing quality. So do you have ideas on how we could get more detailed than that paragraph? If that's as detailed as we could.
But I think to Anthony's point, like if you had a market rate apartment, and then they had a, through like the library, they wanted to offer a class on balancing your checkbook, and it's a market rate apartment. They're just trying to do some extended education. Oh, now all of a sudden, like, oh, we can't, we can't offer that. We can't use the common room at our market rate apartments for this library extension class because now we're offering services. Like, I don't know.
So, a possible wording would be that onsite supportive services that include but are not limited to might, and at the end of the sentence, depending on care, say, might be considered supportive housing?
Or maybe we could, we call it ongoing day, if we throw in there a, you're ongoing onsite. So that it's, you know, it's not just a one-off. It's something that's continuous.
Yeah, I like that.
Is this a proposal in response to a specific condition that exists today, or is this an anticipation of something in the future?
I was just gonna say, we have a lot of groups in town who've been asking for several years for us to better define in our code where can supportive housing go in our community? Because right now, it can't go anywhere. And that's not what we want to put forward. And talking with council, that's not what you all want to put forward. Because nothing's allowed in our community. So we tried to come up with a way to address those needs out in the community, but in a way that still opens the door to public review, public comment. It's not a use by right, and it allows the neighborhood to know what's coming in before it just shows up tomorrow. Well, I like that. About making it an ongoing, because I know some of the senior centers, they offer periodic classes on whatever, on financial planning. They do offer some on medical planning or legal advice planning that some of the senior centers offer that right now currently. If we don't refine that definition of ongoing site services, they could be considered the supportive housing. In which case, then we have to go back in and say, okay, now you have to go through this review process in order to qualify for the zoning you're currently sitting in. That's my concern.
It's a great, it's a great idea. I'm glad we're writing something that allows supportive housing to exist in our community through a, through a process like this. And I think, you know, asking council, like, hey, what do you see here? And I think we brought up some valid points that I'm sure staff can, you know, add a word or two to just, you know, help the public understand it better. But I think in general, I'm super supportive of that whole.
Have we had, has staff had a chance to visit any places that have supportive housing around here?
Not in our community. And just to councilperson Reed's point, we're not aware of any facilities like this that are in our community right now that we've heard inquiries. And so that's the impetus for us bringing this to you and.
One question is, do we have any other communities?
Yep. And I'll let Ross talk about our visit up to Grand Junction. And perhaps just mention too that Ross has investigated codes from other communities that offer supportive housing and that was the foundation of the majority of the code amendments that were raised. We were not the, we're not the only ones investigating this right now.
Yeah, absolutely. We had the chance to go visit Pathway Village in Grand Junction, which has developer that created that facility and then has built up Family Resource Center and provide the services onsite. And from what we saw, it was very well-kept property. It had staff onsite, had rules in place. In general, from staff comments, they had felt that the facility was something that residents took pride in, in a general sense, that it was demanding as far as the people that they were working with, but wasn't, you know, a harbinger of crime or anything like that. And that it provided a sense of community for folks that have experienced homelessness, chronic homelessness, really, at the end of the day. And as far as the services that were provided by Hilltop, they offer different community-focused events, different services, life skills training. And then they also were able to provide different, I guess, immediate resources. Like it might be diapers for your child or food for your family. But they mostly connected folks to other entities that existed in the community. So, your food banks, perhaps, or maybe connected it to somebody that can enroll them in snack or C-Cap. And so they had folks there, two, I believe, full-time staff members that were able to kind of connect the different residents with services and hopefully meet the need of those individuals.
And one of the questions I have is, how do we monitor over a period of time? How do we, we guarantee that they continue to use that model through all of our time? Do we have a way to do an audit, or do we request a second-party auditor? How do we handle that aspect of it?
So we, we, yeah, what would be, what would we be auditing for? To make sure they're continuing to provide supportive services. Because we're, the city's not asking them to provide the services. So if they actually weren't with providing services, that would open up the doors to them not being considered supportive housing anymore. It would make it more flexible.
That was kind of my point. How do we, how do we verify their compliance and maintaining or harnessing supportive housing?
I don't think that would ever be an issue on our side. That would be their side, where they would come to us and say.
We're not demanding that they do.
Yeah, there's no need for this supportive service model anymore. We'd like to just change over to non-supportive housing and regular housing. That would be on their, they would come to us. I can't even see really. The less services they provide, the less restrictions they're on.
Yeah. They don't have to have those services in order to be in that area.
My question, maybe I'm being a little concealer. I'm totally supportive of this concept. But I, looking at some of the senior housing in the community of market rate that exists today, for instance, some of these services are being provided in certain facilities today. By adopting this, would this put those facilities in violation?
No, and I think we can clarify, but right now, the definition specifies that these are for individuals and families experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. So that's part of the definition. And so in those cases, market rate, it's not necessarily the case. But I made a note as well to try and clarify that part. So in addition to clarifying these onsite services, perhaps clarifying the customers essentially of this use. And we might need to use a word like subsidized or something like that to specify. But it's not those other type of market rate uses where there are community kind of educational events onsite. This is, this is meant to be really different. We tried that with homelessness because that's mostly what we're hearing from our community and seeing in other definitions. But I think that would be the difference.
No, and I totally, as I said, totally agree with it. I just want to make sure we don't put some other institution in violation once we adopt this.
And that is the use that feels the same and different honestly in our community is we have a lot of sort of senior housing that sometimes includes some other activities, haircuts onsite, things like that. But different, our goal is for it to be a different definition.
And I think including that at, at risk of homelessness.
I think the pathway to excellence is excellent. Anthony, do you have anything else?
No, I think, I think that really covers it. And I guess, well, I. And I guess, well, maybe not. You know, and in line with David's question here, I mean, can we put something in that if they already exist, that they're kind of grandfathered in so that we don't have to go backwards and it protects them anyway?
Seems like that's already covered by the definition of homeless or campus of homeless.
Yeah, we'll look at just refining the language to make sure we don't accidentally put any existing...
I applaud you for that.
We don't really do grandfather non-conforming uses or anything.
Okay. Yeah, because I mean, I mean, if you think about it, I mean, some senior assisted living centers could technically be at risk of homelessness, folks there could be, depending on the situation. I mean, so I guess it could go, it's just how strict we wanted to stick to the definition.
All those, so assisted livings, those fall under the code as skilled nursing facilities. So that's a whole different segment of the code. They can't just go into resident neighborhoods either. They're already covered.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Item B, Dola Peace Officer Mental Health Support Grant Application. Okay, the grant.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Today, I have a resolution that you'll be considering, actually at tomorrow night's council meeting, seeking your permission to apply or to file a grant application to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs, Peace Officer Mental Health Program. This is a program that was created by Colorado Revised Statutes 24323501. The grant provides financial assistance to local law enforcement agencies to provide mental health services, including on-scene response services to support peace officers handling persons of mental health disorders, counseling services to peace officers, assistance for development and implementation of policies to support peace officers who are involved in shootings or fatal use of force, training and education programs to teach the symptoms of job-related mental trauma and how to prevent and treat such trauma, and peer support programs. The Montrose Police Department is seeking funding in the amount of $90,500, $90,000, $90,500 to support a licensed counselor to oversee the department's peer support program. This would be a contracted position with a consultant or a contractor. Purchase a co-responder vehicle and provide crisis intervention training for officers and co-responders. The city has been a recipient of the grant in the past. In 2019, we received over $42,000 for the purchase of another mental health co-responder vehicle as well as for emotional survival training for peace officers. Mental health issues remain a concern in our community and public safety priority. These persons require, and crisis required tailored response by law enforcement to de-escalate and mitigate these situations to ensure that they don't escalate beyond the control of law enforcement. The mental health co-responder program has been very successful in helping individuals who are experiencing a behavioral health crisis receive the help that they need since its inception in 2018 in partnership with the Center for Mental Health. The program allows for a master's-level mental health clinician embedded in law enforcement to respond with officers to de-escalate and mitigate a mental health crisis situation. I should note that the salary of the clinician, or clinicians, they now have three, is paid entirely by the Center for Mental Health. Prior to the 2019 grant, the clinician was tied to the police officer and vice versa from the initial call through stabilization at the hospital to determine if the patient should be committed or released for a treatment plan. As a result of being tied together, the officer was taken out of the rotation to respond to other vehi, or to respond to other calls. And that clinician was able to complete follow-up visits in the following days. The purchase of the vehicle in the past allowed them to respond autonomously and stay on the scene to deliver patient services, complete follow-up visits, while also freeing up that officer for additional calls for service. However, there still remains a need. Again, the, there are now three clinicians. They are shared between the Montrose Police Department and Montrose County Sheriff's Department. And so an additional vehicle would help release those officers for, to respond to other calls as mental health services continue to be an issue or need in our community. So there'd be funding requested for this vehicle. There would be also funding, again, requested to hire a contractor or consultant to oversee the department's peer support program, the city's program. This includes having a licensed counselor available to provide officer therapy, checkups, critical incident deeper, deeper, can't even say that, excuse me, debriefing and officer support. Finally, funding is requested for crisis intervention training for officers and co-responders. This training provides officers with awareness and knowledge of how to deal with individuals who are experiencing a behavioral health issue or have been diagnosed with physical or mental health conditions. This helps officers recognize these issues and address them appropriately without the use of force when practical. When speaking with officers, I talked with Tim, I've been working with him on this grant, he said this is one of the best trainings that officers have ever attended, that he's aware of, in talking about it. This training uses professional actors portraying incidents of individuals in crisis and shows officers how to respond. Therefore, we're seeking this grant application, or to file this grant application. The resolution before you authorizes the filing of it, agrees to spend, agrees to spend funds on statutory priorities and complete grant reporting, and acknowledges Tabor implications, the City of Montrose voters debrused grants from Tabor in 1996. It authorizes the city manager to execute the grant agreement and for staff to act. And I should also note that the applicant, application deadline, you know, what's the application deadline? It's not actually been announced, but Dola encouraged us to move forward with the resolution. They anticipate to announce a deadline very soon with a quick turnaround of 30 days. So that's why it's on council agenda for tomorrow night to make sure that we're ready to go. There is also no match in this program. So it's a good deal. With that, I can take any questions. Thank you.
I just wanted to highlight that there is no match required from the City of Montrose to use grant on all citizens. I think it's a fantastic idea. The fact that it provides training for our officers in tense stressful situations helps make Montrose one of the prime standard police forces in our... We'll be able to host the training internally. That's the, that's the...
I heard, didn't I? Out in council, I hear ya. Any other comments?
Just good to the beach.
Thank you.
And I think there's, there are many police departments who do have someone to in their positions to respond in a regular basis. So I think that's very, very good.
Well, the cool thing is, is our program's expanding. We have one, now we have three. And the other night, I was coming home from the Christmas parade, and we had an officer actually on the radio saying, "I really need the co-responder." So it's really cool to see that dynamic has changed and our officers are comfortable with the program. They're calling for the co-responder, but if it's not there, you can feel the dynamic. So it's good.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Item C, 2022 sanitary sewer cure-in-place blank bed, debriefing.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. And again, this is a repeat item that was brought back, brought to you back in October, I believe, for the 2021 project. So this is basically extending that contract into 2022 to do the cure-in-place lining process for the sanitary sewers. These are sewers that we identify through our TV inspection program that have structural defects that can be restored by doing an interior lining of that pipe and restoring that structural strength, extending the life of those sewers and eliminating that need to dig the street up and, or alley up and do some wholesale replacement, which is very costly and intensive. This, this project this year is finishing up for 2022, finishing up lining a lot of the lines that are intersecting in Townsend. And so prior to the Melon Overlay Project, we're trying to get all of those lines in good structural condition where we're not coming in there three or two or three or four years later and tearing up that overlay process to fix a failure that got us hurt. This, this project again is for not to exceed $250,000. It's a unit price contract, which depending on what line segments they're actually able to do, which, what the length of those are, will affect the total price of that. But we will monitor that to make sure that we stay under that $250,000 that was included in the 2022 budget for, for this type of projects. With that, I will take any questions.
Anthony, any, any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Dave?
Nope.
And so this will be on the agenda for tomorrow night. And that is to allow the contractor to, that's coming, that's going to be in town finishing the 2021 project to move on to the 2022 project without us incurring additional mobilization costs.
And I think, so basically we have three, three ways to replace those. One's to take it out, one's to buy first, and one's to enter.
Yes, yes.
And one of our concerns is trying to keep still going on about the searchlights. Thank you, Mayor. Wonderful. Item B, Ford vehicle purchase and local purchases. I love the guys bringing the blue ties.
Probably tomorrow.
Yeah. We'll, we'll share one.
Put it off.
All right, good morning. I have a few items for you today. First is our, our Ford vehicle purchase. We typically see one of these every year, but this is our, kind of our large Ford order. So the recommendation is to purchase 20 vehicles from Seltar Motors for a total of $856,827.22. This is nine replacement vehicles and 11 additional. And the reason why we separate them out into replacements versus additional is how they're funded. So the replacements are funded through our fleet division, which the fleet has been collecting from the divisions throughout the life of that vehicle to replace it. And so those are scheduled replacements. And then the 11 additional are budgeted within the budget of that division. So I listed out several replacements, so like police interceptors are for additional vehicles there. Those are budgeted in the PD patrol budget. So, and as you down the list, there's, there's several additional. There's additional vehicle for facilities, animal control, trash recycle, pickup, building inspection and engineering. So other divisions are expanding. Obviously, they need something to drive, so we see several additional vehicles this year. So the total budgeted between all those budgets, so between the fleet budget and the division budgets, adds up to $961,250. And so the total savings between what would be awarded and that budgeted amount is $104,422. And so some of that savings, actually most of that savings would be recognized in the budgets of the division that's budgeting for the additional vehicles. But some of it is going to be recognized to the fleet fund. And it's about $40,000 will be saved in the fleet fund based on what was collected versus not much is being spent. And the reason I mention that is because some of our other purchases this year, we have seen go a little bit high, and that comes out of the fleet fund. And in this case, we're seeing a saving. So that, that happens yearly, or we'll have some, some are higher than what we've collected in the fleet fund and some are lower. And in this case, we're saving about $40,000 to the fleet fund.
Do you have, these are, these are purchased off the Colorado State Department?
Um, no, we put these out for bid because they're so unique. So we could use the state bid, but for police interceptor vehicles and even a lot of our pickups have a dump bed or a plow or something unique about them where we, we like to open up the door for, especially for local participation, where the state bid is often awarded for a kind of a canned vehicle. And oftentimes, even I, I'm not sure, I actually think Seltar might be the state bidder. I'm not sure this year it kind of goes back and forth. But it's usually a front-range dealership.
Is there a local Ford dealer?
They did not bid in this year. And I'm not exactly sure why. They were involved in the bidding process, but they then did not, did not submit a bid.
Okay. I talked to Wes Abbott about it. And I think we talked in passing, but we may look at changing the way we bid it out moving forward. They're having real difficulties with the, meeting the prices of the front-range dealerships on squad cars, the outfitting of the squad cars. Just because they have so much bulk purchasing power in the front range. For the entities that go and install the equipment on the squad cars, all the electronics, extra gadgets, they can't compete with that. And so they knew that, and so they didn't even bid. And they're asking that we reconsider how we, maybe split out and do two bids. One for our squad, one for our other companies. I think we'll look at that and then give them a shave. We'd really love to buy things locally as much as we can.
It's a great idea. Yeah, I think, well, it's a good thing to do, though, is we're not, we're not costing us time to our staff or our staffs.
No, it's not, it's not a big deal to separate those into basically two separate bids. One for patrol vehicles and one for the rest of the fleet. The reason we have combined them thus far is to try to get a better price on quantity. But I don't think that that will affect that by separating patrol and then F-150s for the most part is going to be the other side of it. I still think we have a large quantity of both and we're going to get a good price. And if we only had one, and we're buying one F-150, then, then you do want to combine it all into one large order. But in our case, we have a lot of both. We replace a lot of F-150s and we replace a lot of patrol vehicles every year. So I think we have the quantity to be able to do that.
In terms of the budget, at what point does a division, when they get a new car that they are paying for, because it's a new car, I mean, it's an additional car, when do they start giving money to the fleet division to budget for replacement of it?
So the following year after it's bought. So if they're, they've budgeted in 2022 for an additional vehicle, they don't pay a lease on that back to fleet that year. But it would start in 2023, and it would be based on the life expectancy of that vehicle and then anticipated replacement cost. So they're playing, they're paying the lease based on what we're anticipating it'd be replaced for. So 10 years from now, we're kind of having to, you know, estimate that replacement cost. But it's not, it'll be the following year after it's purchased.
Anthony, any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
And only item other with this one is just requesting that is on tomorrow night's agenda to allow me to move forward with getting these purchases as quickly as possible.
Are you guys looking at any difficulties in getting these vehicles?
Um, not in these vehicles yet. In other vehicles, like some of the ones we are not entering, such as like a Super Duty F-350, we've heard of extensive delays in that, in that vehicle. And in the ones we have bid, there's been no mention yet of extended delays.
Just several months.
Yeah. We typically see eight months, nine months is normal to be able to get a lot of these vehicles. That's what we've seen the last few years. And that's what's anticipated for 2022.
Will they stagger the delivery of those vehicles? Or is it just one...
No, they, they stagger them. So once they get, it depends on what they're being outfitted with. You know, if it's just an F-150 with no outfitting, then we'll get those first. Sometimes they will put a flatbed on it and that takes a little longer. So they'll keep me staggered, but they're kind of in groups of type.
Any other questions? Thanks, Jim. What do you find in science?
This one also. Yep, this is me. All right. So this is a board recommendation to American Classic Sign Manufacturer out of Alaska, Carolina for $191,500, assisted implement phase three of our wayfinding project, which we had started in 2018, moved to phase two in 2019. This phase three would include parking lot signage, park rule signs, visitor kiosks, directional signage to the amphitheater, dog park signage, arrival signage at Zero Summit, and then a few cleanup items from phase one and two, just some signs that were not included in those scopes. So Public Works, Works with our DART group to determine priorities for this project. And that's how this, this scope was actually determined back in 2019 when we were completing phase two and was included in our 2020 budget and proposal at that point. So we worked with, with DART group at that point and also here recently when we... Um, so we worked with, with DART group in, at that point, and also here recently when we, um, were reissuing this, uh, recommendation, and to make sure our priorities were still the same and they aligned with, uh, where they were a couple of years ago. And, um, and for the most part, yes, we're still a lot of the same scope as it was previously. We've actually added a little bit to the scope, um, because of how we budgeted in our, our different divisions. We are able to add to the scope compared to what we had in 2020. And the reason I mentioned, um, 2020 is because this, uh, was recommended, um, to council on, on award recommendation in March of 2020, which as you all know was right when, um, COVID was, uh, rearing its head, and we were all very unsure of what may be coming financially from that. And at that time, we chose not to award this contract, um, to see, kind of see what would happen with COVID. And, and at that point, we, um, let the contractor know that we're not awarding, but we would, once it is funded and available, we would contact them, um, and ask if they would, um, still consider, um, holding their price and doing the budget. And so we did that. We contacted American Classic, um, this spring, uh, I'm sorry, this fall, and, uh, asked if they would, um, you know, honor their pricing from the proposal, and they did, uh, which is surprising. We expected to have to rebid this out and probably see a significant price increase. Um, but we were surprised. They were, uh, very excited about the project still and, and remembered us very well, and were looking forward to continuing the project, and were willing to hold their pricing from what was originally proposed. So that's what we're recommending to, uh, American Classic with, um, the same scope that was bid on with, um, a few additional items. So we're adding a couple of signs mainly from our parks division, um, we budgeted additionally this year. Um, so we, we include $175,000 in our streets budget for Wayfinding, and that was the same. Um, well, it's additional this year, we budgeted $16,500 in our parks division for, um, dog park signage, um, and Zero Summit, uh, arrival signage, things like that, which we would be adding to this scope. And we would be utilizing their pricing that they established in their original proposal to those expanded items. So, um, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have a, a free rein on additional items. It would be based on pricing before this. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I don't know if I skipped over any of that, but.
Well, I think some of this, you discussed in the past, we're adding additional signs. We have facilities now that we didn't have previously, so we have this part of the nation's.
Exactly, yeah.
I think postponing in March of 2020 was a good decision, and I'm really glad we can pick it up again with a few more signs and get that front raising.
Anthony, any comments?
No, I'm good, Doug, thank you.
All right, we go to item F, North Connect Trail restroom.
Me again. All right, so this is, yeah, for the North Connect Trail restroom project. Um, we're kind of three-part in the, um, recommendation here. So it's, um, the, the total amount to be used on the project, um, and a contract award to Stryker, and an MOA with Colorado Yurt Company, and I'll explain, um, more of each of those. But here today with us, John Gibson, uh, with Colorado Yurt is here. Uh, Mark Armstrong is managing the project, and he's here. Um, and Scott Murphy helped a lot getting the MOA, um, established, and he's here as well. So we'll go through each of these, and if there's any questions, just stump me maybe one of them. So starting with the, the MOA, so this is a, a partnership between the city Montrose and Colorado Yurt Company, um, to build this restroom, what currently is Colorado Yurt property, but it's adjacent to our Connect Trail. And I guess I should mention that the location is, um, in Colorado Doors, just to the north of, um, Mayfly, like with our current building right behind where Colorado Yurt is building their building right now. Which is coming up nicely, by the way. If you've been by there, you can, um, the frame is up and you can definitely see the shape. Um, so it is immediately behind Colorado Yurt's new building, um, adjacent to the Connect Trail. It's a small piece of, um, kind of a weird leg of, of his, uh, property now. And so the MOA would, um, would be that Colorado Yurt would dedicate, um, a piece of property there that the restroom would be on, so it's a fairly small piece, but it's enough for the restroom site and connection to a trail. And then also assist with the, um, construction costs. So it would be contributing to the, um, construction costs. And it's because in turn, our city would build a restroom with shower facilities on the backside of the, of the restroom to be utilized by, uh, Colorado Yurt Company and some of their customers. So it's a public and private use of this facility, and, and that's what the MOA establishes. And then also in addition, uh, the, the city would maintain the facility as far as janitorial on the restroom side as we do in any other restroom, um, and the entire facility structurally. Uh, but Colorado Yurt would, uh, provide janitorial services for the shower side, which would be private to them. So we, we issued initially, uh, we issued an RFP for design and construction of this facility. Um, and I included in here the, the, uh, chart that shows, um, how we scored each of the, uh, proposals. And Stryker, um, scored highest, and obviously they're scored on, on several things, um, including cost, but, um, qualifications, experience, team members, those things are all taken into account. Um, so Stryker was selected, um, for the design portion at that time. The design, uh, wasn't much lower cost, obviously, than construction. And construction, as far as the proposal, was based on a scope that we provided for them. And that's where we knew the restroom would have, um, some of the basic elements. Obviously, we didn't know a complete design, but we knew what elements the restroom would entail. So that's what they provided the price on. And it was basically a way to get all the contractors apples to apples. Since we didn't have a design, we provided a scope for them that allowed pricing on them, even between all contractors. And so Stryker has been able to provide us, um, some design concepts of which, kind of which level, um, that we would select. You can go from very, very basic, um, just CMU block and, um, a single pitch roof all the way to metal paneling, stone, things like that, we can make decisions on, on look and feel and fit into the, um, the area, um, as well as, um, maintenance, so. And so through those concepts, we've been able to select kind of what the city would like and, and Colorado Yurt Company would like in that restroom, and being able to get Stryker to price that, which we've already done, and that's what, uh, we're including is the, um, contract award for Stryker, and that's a GMP, um, so it's a not to exceed amount, um, based on a conceptual design and direction of mechanical systems that we've, we've, uh, recommended. And so that's the, um, $255, 305, and 39 cents in this, um, Stryker's contract amount. And that does include a contractor's contingency of 5%. So that's part of the recommendation is to sell it to Stryker. That is part of the total costs of, um, now the owner costs would include above and beyond that, utility connections, we would provide the E1 sewer pump, um, the fiber to the building, um, and the contingency. And so I would add a, a 10% contingency there as well. So we're at a total of about 15% overall in the project, uh, which, um, is, is high, but we're very early, so we have not done design yet. We have gone conceptual design, um, so there's a lot of unknowns. Um, it's a very, very small project, so, and a lot of the utilities are already stubbed out near the site, which helps a lot of those unforeseen, you know, now we, we know a lot because the utilities are very close. Um, so, um, 15%, I think is a comfortable contingency to have at this stage. And it's also as part of the, um, cost breakdown that we had, um, Stryker providing in this restroom was an ad alternate for the showers. So we wanted to know what the additional cost was for the showers, and that's where Colorado Yurt would come in and help with that cost. So we asked them to provide an ad alternate on the project, so the city's building a restroom facility. What is the ad alternate for adding showers? And that came in at, uh, $46,000. So this is where we come back to the MOA with, um, Colorado Yurt, um, and they're, um, dedicating the property piece, which is valued at $18,200, and dedicating $27,800 to the construction costs, $100. Um, and that brings their contribution to $46,000. So then I'll go to our overall budget impact, uh, how we, we budgeted for this project in our, um, parks capital budget, and we budgeted for, we put a placeholder of $200,000 in the parks budget for this. And at that time, we knew very little other than that it was going to happen this year. We didn't, uh, or that was proposed to happen this year. We didn't know much about it, um, scale or size, or, um, you know, if the showers were included, that sort of thing. So the im, um, sorry, the impact to budget, because the, the total of 344, um, is the overall cost to the owner to the city for the project, but because of the contribution from Colorado Yurt, the impact to the budget is $317,055, which is $117,000 of overall we had included in our budget of $200,000. So, um, the, I guess at this point, the proposal would be that, um, it's going to make that portion of the parks budget go over budget, um, but at the, it could be supplemented towards the end of the year if, if it requires it. Um, and I think that can be determined later on in 2022 if, um, if the parks budget, um, does go over because of this project.
I would point out that the memorandum of agreement, the MOA, does highlight all of these things, and it turns out very specifically those items, each party has responsibility for, and each party bears the obligation for. So all of this is covered in the memorandum of agreement, it's very clear.
Yep, I basically copied this right out of that, and that is, that's right.
I have two questions. Um, I don't think I've ever gonna go on the record as saying that, that contingency may be too high, but we have a 5% construction contingency on the construction and design from Stryker, or the construction part?
The construction.
And then, and then we're adding another 10% on top of that along with the other owner costs.
That's right. Yep, and so I can explain why that, I did it that way.
Okay.
Um, because of the owner costs, like, let's say the fiber, for example, I got a quote to provide the fiber to that site location, um, and that's based on what they know now. So if they're to counter something for selling the fiber, that would be an additional to the quote I have received, and that would be a direct owner cost.
So I get that. I get the 10% owner, um, contingency on the utility connections, fiber, but why are we double, um, doing contingency on Stryker's part? Because we're doing 5% and then we're doing another 10%?
Um, because there's so much unknown still. So if we had a complete design, I would feel comfortable with that being much less even 5% or less.
Okay.
But we don't have a complete design. We're still working through that, and, um, let's say, um, metal paneling that we, as we go through design, we've, we've learned that the metal paneling we are, we have priced now, um, may not match very well with the adjacent building or something. We need to change the metal paneling to a, of course, a higher cost paneling. That, that would be something we don't have in our design yet and is now priced. So without having, uh, design done, we're at a little bit of higher risk, and that's why the contingency.
The contingency is higher.
It is higher. And also I would say that this project is a relatively low cost, and when it comes to a construction project, so a $300,000 project, typically you would see a higher percentage of contingency because it relates to a small amount of dollars. If this was several million dollars, then, then you can have a smaller percentage of contingency.
And then my other question is, I think, much simpler, and this is written, it looks, um, it's a little unclear, although I think it's kind of obvious. Um, that Stryker is not maintaining the facility, because it says the city would contract Stryker and company to build the restroom shower facility and maintain the facility, janitorial on the restroom, and it, that.
Yeah.
I think you mean.
Yeah, I must not have clarified that well. No, Stryker would not be maintaining the facility. The city would be maintaining the facility, and, um, apparently I used too many A's there.
I think that, I think that's what happened, and I just want to make sure that there's no confusion that Stryker is maintaining.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, the city will maintain.
The other thing I would like to highlight is, we understand the need for the security, but could you explain the need for fiber to a public restroom?
Yeah, um, so one of the main reasons is for the access controls into the doors. Um, so that allows us to program and monitor, um, the access controls, so it'd be a proxy system similar to what we have on a lot of our facilities. Um, one for security, um, two for controllability and monitoring, uh, because we would have different accesses for different doors. Um, the restroom side versus the shower side would be, um, different access allowed. And, um, and that way, code doesn't have to be programmed in every time somebody different uses the shower side versus the restroom side. We can issue a proxy card, um, to, to any user, um, to access, uh, either side, uh, through the night, but the public side of the restroom will be just open during the day, uh, as any other facility. So one is access control, um, two is security cameras. Um, we're trying to make that standard on any facility moving forward, that we, um, have good surveillance. And so, um, that's part two of the reason for that.
I think we should identify the best available security.
Right, yeah, absolutely. I'll be on the outside.
Yeah, we've had problems in the past, and, uh, some cases where they've put things into alarm mechanism. We have a way to control that.
We do, we're having our janitorial service, um, check and monitor restrooms on a daily basis that, that helps with that. Um, having like this type of door control will also help, is that we can monitor that. And we're also looking at, um, a little bit more advanced alarm systems on many facilities. If we continue to have issues where we're not able to prevent people from packing alarm or something like that, having more of an alarm system, um, that's something we're considering. Um, it's not proposed in this building now, um, but with fiber, it could be easily added later.
I will comment, Mr. Mayor, is that with respect to the water construction contract to Stryker, I believe that there's no solution because of the red potential to strike in. Anthony, any questions?
Yeah, um, I, I do have one question. I know this is all part of our, the old memorandum, and this agreement was done a long time ago, um, you know, to, to get this going. But I, I guess, you know, I know that the shower is a requirement for them to do, um, to, to have the, the people housed there, but aren't the bathrooms as well? I mean, if they didn't have bathrooms there, they couldn't have people sleep in there. So, I mean, I'm, I'm just questioning whether or not we shouldn't be, so a little bit more share on their side.
Yes, the restrooms could be utilized by, um, the people using the Yurt facilities as well, so they would be able to access the restroom side or the shower side at night, let's say, where the restroom may be closed after hours to the public. Um, but generally, the, the restroom would be constructed for the use of the, of the public, so, um, you know, as a trail user in that area, that, that was the point of having the restroom in the area was for the public use. And so we thought the only real additional cost to the building was the shower side. That's why we separated it as an alternate, that the restroom side, um, although it may be utilized by, by Yurt Company as well, um, that the restroom was built primarily for public use.
There weren't any designs of the, of the interior, so I, I guess I assume that maybe the shower side also had a, a toilet? It does not?
It doesn't.
Okay.
No, but they would be able to use.
They'd obviously be able to use the other ones, but it wouldn't, okay.
In the shower facility, there's only one shower facility, or are there?
There's two, so, um, it would be two single showers, um, separate doors, um, separate from the restroom. And then, and that was partly cost driven, so we could, you know, build a restroom side that had a shower, a toilet, and be more of a complete.
Like the cabanas at the rec center, for example?
Yes, uh, but the cost was what drove that to, what do we really need? You know, we need just a restroom and we need just a shower. We can separate these, make them much more basic and, and save quite a bit of money by trying to keep the cost as low as possible. So that's why it is separated in that way, and so if you're, um, you know, if you're staying in the Yurt, uh, facilities and you, you use a shower and restroom, you're gonna have to go to the shower one side, and then round the other to use the restroom, and that's just, uh, due to cost.
And Anthony, just, uh, more on the public use of the restrooms when COVID hit, and our trails, you know, saw, you know, more than double usage as compared to normal. One of the main things we heard from the community was a need for a public restroom on the north end of the trail, uh, because otherwise people are going in the woods all along the trail. And so there's a huge public need for a restroom, uh, on that end.
So it's something that we would probably have done whether Colorado Yurt moved there or not.
Yeah, we were, we were already talking about building that in our.
That's the reason for that separation. Yeah, that's the reason for that separation and division of, uh, of cost the way it currently is. So. Yep, and then be able to partner with Colorado Yurt was a huge part that made it possible because otherwise we'd have been any utilities to a location out there, uh, it would be very difficult. So. So we would, overall, are seeing, uh, pretty significant cost savings by having Colorado Yurt being partnered with us on this project because their accessibility to utilities, uh, um, property, property that's access and so on, so, so. All in all, it's the win-win-win.
That's right.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
We expect that bow tie tomorrow night though.
Okay, got it. Next item is three general city council discussions. Anthony, do you have anything to discuss?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
No, I just wanted to give a shout out to all the city staff that did such a great job on that parade of lights. That was such an enjoyable and fun event, I think very, very successful. And I think the community really responded well to it. I think we have, it looked like we had thousands of people there, I mean, just based on, uh, quick thumbnail illustrations. So congratulations city staff. You guys did a fantastic job.
I would just expand on, uh, what, what Dave said. Uh, and I, I think the parade was wonderful. And some specific people I'd like to give a huge shout out to, Kaylee Ritten at OBT, Sergeant Brian Rumbaugh at PD, Dan Payne at Public Works, William Hall and the entire PD. Mayor Gladwell, Gladscow for your excellent judging. Mayor Pro Tim for your amazing, um, seeing and judging. Um, and, uh, also to Gunnison, our, uh, youth council member who was also, uh, a judge. And also Sue Henson, our county commissioner for participating and judging. I thought, I thought the evening was great. Everybody did a wonderful job. People seemed to enjoy themselves. Had a huge crowd. The weather couldn't have been better. So. Thank you. Please pass that along to all of us now. And I thank, I appreciate it very much. Same way. I thought it was a great success, success. And it seemed like everything was, was well planned and well controlled. I'd also like to thank the staff out of the building. And the ballot sense may out there Saturday or on Sunday. And they did a tremendous job of keeping everything going out there. And we went off great. And I think Sunday, I don't think it was going to deceive the place. You know, the council office staff. I think you guys are all in quiet.
And a good thing when the attorneys are quiet.
It does worry you. That's unusual.
Gratifying. It's kind of.
Kayla, do you have anything?
Nothing for me.
I would, I would make a comment. Like Kayla and I had a chance to go out to Johnson Elementary and meet with our government class of two third grade classes on government out there. And, you know, an interesting group. It was a lot of fun. And they sent us a thank you. They all signed it for two classes. I thought it was very interesting. And they had some pretty interesting questions for us to answer. It was a lot of fun. Very enjoyable. If there's nothing else. Yes.
I just wanted to, you know, they haven't found out by now that we were awarded the State Silver Fund Grant, $250,000 to assist with the rehabilitation of the potato growers building. So I'm really excited for that project. It's really gonna complement nicely with the west mains revitalization. Um, so really excited for that work. We also found out that we could be giving about $22,000 to the Great Fly Market, that one enforcement program, and stuff to promote this, uh, to help investigate and prosecute illegal marijuana.
I'd like to thank you for putting together the retreat, the youth council, or the council retreat. That was outstanding. So.
I'm glad you said that.
And we, I really enjoyed it. That was awesome.
I agree. It's a lot of fun to really get to meet the youth council in a really more relaxed, casual environment. Get to chat with some of these kids. And they give us hope for our future because those are really sharp kids.
So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming.
No, I'm doing, thank you.
No, I just want to say thanks to Kendall. He does amazing work. And we, we see all these grants that he applies for and we bring in millions of dollars hard. So, who goes to Kendall? We're not successful 100% of the time, but we're successful almost 100% of the time.
Trash yourself. Major League Batters envy your success.
Do you have any comments?
No comments for me. Thank you.
Judge Green, I can be heavy. Lisa?
Mark's kind of hiding back there.
Got money. Well, in that case, if there are nothing else, it's, uh, that's about the meeting for today. We'll adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.